Hello, my name is Nicole Dolan and I am speaking tonight to request transparency regarding the Liberty Bell Roof Plan. At the board meeting a month ago, I spoke up because I was concerned that the Liberty Bell Roof Replacement was left out of the budget. During the meeting, Mr. Pepe said that it wasn't in the budget but could be paid for by the general reserves. At the end of the meeting, I asked a question, but understandably, um, it couldn't be addressed in discussions because the agenda part of the meeting was over. So I'm just asking again so it doesn't get forgotten about. I was wrong when I thought that being left out of the budget meant the replacement could not be planned for until the summer of 2025. My new understanding, thanks to Mr. Pepe's clarification, is that even though the Liberty Bell Roof Replacement Project isn't in this budget, it is still possible that the project could be planned for the summer of 2024 if needed. So my question is, do I have that correct now? While I'm glad that the presentation a month ago had a slide listing a few things that were not in the budget but were on your radar, in my opinion, that is only translucent, translucent, not transparent. Transparent would be sharing with the public the following information. One, who is doing the monitoring of the building? Is it a district employee, an engineer, a firm? Two, what is the general scope of the timeline of the steps and lead times needed for a planned project, meaning not an emergency project? What I mean is, has it already been spec'd? If your monitoring found something indicating it was time to replace the roof, what is the earliest you could start the repair based on the spec, bid, build process, and materials lead time? How long is the repair expected to take? And most importantly, how long after that indicator would you be able to wait before starting the repair if you couldn't do it right away because school is happening? And number three, if for some reason the situation turned into an emergency timeline instead of a planned timeline, how much more expensive would the project become? I ask these questions tonight because it's almost June 14th, and on June 14th last year, the Facilities Committee meeting, uh, the Facilities Committee said that it was too late for the replacement to happen in the summer of 2023. So at what point is it too late for the summer of 2024 to happen and be a possibility if needed? To be clear, I'm not asking these questions because I think the answers will somehow prove that you are making bad choices. I'm asking because I think your answers could clear up a lot of misunderstandings and help families trust that all is well in hand. But that trust has to be earned, and being upfront and transparent about these details is how you earn that trust. Thank you.
Evening, the executive session reports. Um, there was an executive session held tonight prior to the board meeting where personal matter was discussed as well as student representation.
Second.
Four short minutes of May 8.
Second.
Inviting comments and questions. Okay. On favor.
Aye.
Those minutes are good.
I have two top two topics. First, district updates. Do you want to extend congratulations to the senior class of 2023? We look forward to June 2nd, Lehigh University State of Nevada. We have a commencement, thank Mr. Miller, the president of the university, very extraordinary talent, and we're going to be very, very exciting time to bring the students to the graduation. Congratulations, Dave Lee Kirk. Second item is distributed to the board letter from Upper Salken Township. It speaks about more representation at the Southern High School District Board. In that letter, suggesting that the seven member board at Upper Salken Township, Southern High School District School would be entitled to two members of the board. And all the reading and aware, any issues that are being faced by the Southern High School Board, the suggestion that I have tonight is not that we would take any position on any of those issues required of study, rather that the board appoint a second member to the Southern High School Board so that our district is fully represented in challenging conversations that we take another community statement. With that, I remember there was a talk with Sister, I believe that is legal corporate code that we're working on. With that, I think I put out for the table of action to choose the action.
I was one of the people that threw my hat in the ring to be the appointed, uh, library board member. And, uh, I had a small list here of reasons that I thought that I would be a good fit for it. Um, the first thing was fundraising is a huge aspect of library, for library board members. I was the president of three PTAs in three different buildings for our district, and in that time I oversaw the raising of over $15,000 in funds per year in just one of our elementary buildings. I've spoken to other library board members and understand the extensive time and energy involved with being a board member, and I am up to the task. I've been employed by another district for years and have worked at elementary, middle, and high schools, and have a real working knowledge of the library needs of students. I grew up in Lower Salken Township and spent the first half of my life there. I understand that community as well as Southern High School District community. I have a vested interest in making sure that all residents and children of both are well served. I have spent time trying to learn more about how the library system works and what some of the roles and regulations are governing it. I am anxious to learn more about it and find out what can or cannot be done, and what repercussions different actions might bring, especially where our students are concerned. Uh, there is a lot of hype right now about what is currently happening between Upper Salken Township and Lower Salken Township and the school district. I would not be a one-issue, agenda-driven appointee. As that issue is resolved, I'll continue to fundraise and serve our community well. I believe very strongly that people volunteering for these positions should be doing it for the right reasons, to make our library better, more useful, and financially responsible to their community. Our library deserves board members who are willing to work and contribute, not just show up to the board meetings. That is what I hope to do if you appoint me.
So I was another, uh, I was the other member who put my hat out there, certainly community. Um, while I appreciate the experience there, I think I'm basically conservative. I definitely have some concerns if your township's letter to the library, how the library is currently being run. I certainly can understand, it's a concern that, uh, certainly from what we heard, you know, this past year, there's concerns about long-term physical health of the library, certainly.
Okay, so let's take.
Has there been any?
I go, okay. Did we advertise or ask, I mean, as the, is, how does the public know that we're seeking input on, on this broadly, or how did we go about informing the, the community about that?
It was, it was my suggestion, and only a suggestion, uh, that we follow the process that we did when we appointed, uh, the individual to the, uh, Lehigh Cardman Community College, uh, board, in that we first saw if individual board members were, any elected board members from this board were interested. At, at that time, no one was, and so then we went out and reached out into the community, and we'd had a process that ultimately, uh, ended with, at a selection of a community member. Uh, and if we had no board members who were willing to participate in this, uh, activity, and I, I would suggest we would do the same, but I, I think first, first opportunity would be for interested board members. That's how we did it with LTRIC.
Okay.
And my suggestion is how we would do it here, but that is just a thought that the board would be able to consider.
Okay. Um, and then, um, if that's the case, uh, to the two board members that are interested, uh, did I, did both of you have the opportunity to read the letter from Upper Salken Township of May 9th?
Yeah.
And, uh, do you agree or disagree, or do you have an opinion on the May 9th letter as to, I mean, they, they, I think, in addition to pointing out the issues with, uh, you know, that we should have another, they, they certainly make, I think, their feelings known about, uh, broadly, sort of, uh, their opinion as to some of the leadership at the library and what they want to see done. And I was curious if, on the whole, uh, you are neutral on that letter, uh, agree mostly with that letter, or disagree mostly with that letter, or, or if you want to characterize it in your own way, that, that's fine. I'm just kind of curious to get an idea of where folks stand on, on Upper Salken's position as to the library.
Yeah, I certainly, um, I've read that letter a few times, and, um, and I, my understanding is that Upper Salken, uh, had really strongly wanted the board, the, the Southern High Public Library Board to accept an offer from Lower Salken Township. It's my understanding that offer has expired, but it was an offer of $250,000 upfront, and then $75,000 a year for a total of $1 million guaranteed over the next 10 years. And, uh, it was very clear in that letter that Upper Salken, um, wanted that to, to, to occur, uh, to accept that offer. Um, and our, my, it's my, it's my understanding that the library board allowed that to lapse, but it's also my understanding that perhaps with the change in, in, uh, board leadership, that that offer maybe may remain available. That's my understanding.
Correct.
I certainly fully understand, um, and I certainly empathize with the financial concerns of Upper Salken Township. And I share some of the similar concerns that Upper Salken Township had.
Thank you, Dr. Wayack.
I read the letter, and, uh, I believe that Upper Salken Township is not totally up to speed on all of the rules and regulations that go along with the library. Um, I do think that it sounds like a good offer, but I think that until you are sitting in that seat and you can look at all of the facts and you can see how accepting that money could or could not either help or disadvantage our community or our students, you don't really, yeah, like, it's hard to know whether I would take a stance that, yeah, we should take the money, or no, we shouldn't, until I'm sitting there and I can see what the library rules and regulations are and see what the repercussions of accepting it will be, or what the positive, there, there could be a ton of benefits that I don't know about that go along with taking the money. I'm open, I'm open-minded to it, but I do want more facts before trying to take a stance on it.
Thank you, Kyle. Um, I, I did also, um, perhaps before we make a motion about, um, selecting a possible board member, uh, to sit on, uh, this board, um, or, I, I mean, the Public Library Board, um, I'm of the mind that I would prefer, uh, and I, I agree that, you know, I don't know that we have to be consistent. Uh, I didn't have a problem with, uh, the LTRIC board being filled by someone from this board if they were interested. Um, in this particular, uh, I, I think it might be helpful, um, to have someone off the board, uh, do it. And so, um, I would also, uh, open for debate, or, uh, would want, at least want to let my feelings known that I think it would be advantageous to the board to seek other, uh, possible nominees, uh, for, uh, this position. But having said that, I'll, I'll vote the other way, too. But that's just my two thoughts. Thank you. But I, uh, I just did want to see where people were on, on the Upper Salken Township's, uh, uh, view of things, uh, because I think it's important if we nominate someone on there that we understand for the most part. And I agree, I understand, Kyle, that you are saying you, you know, need some, would want to know some more about the, the situation when it's fair. Uh, but I was just kind of curious about that. Thank you.
Before we, uh, open to nominations, I just have one clarifying, uh, point. I like Jeff's idea of, my understanding of this position when the school board has filled it in the past is that, um, it's a, it's not your typical board position. It's a very active, like a, a fundraising type of, these folks aren't just a library board, but they are active in acquiring donated, um, resources of all kinds to the library. So in that regard, I know as a board member, there's a lot of responsibilities we have. And so Jeff, I, I do like your idea of involving someone else in the community who, one, can bring more awareness to the library and is dedicated to that, but also, um, perhaps has a little more bandwidth to do that kind of, um, community fundraising that I know that board has done in the past. I just wanted to clarify, um, two things. One, I attended, our, uh, board meeting ended early enough so that last time I could run across the street and attend the Upper Salken Board Meeting where they were talking about this. And so the one thing I heard in that meeting, I just wanted to clarify, was it was my understanding that the lib, from this, this letter and also from that meeting, a combination, was that the current library board, um, didn't so much vote down or approve or disapprove Lower Salken's offer, but they, um, basically couldn't, couldn't make a decision without having other constituents, something about they wanted to involve, they, they voted to involve all of the, um, constituent members of the library. So that would be Borough and Township and School District. Um, and, and I think they didn't approve that library funding, but that they, you know, sent a message back that they would like to have more representation discussing it with them. That was my understanding now. I don't know the legalese of whether or not that does or doesn't mean a decision was made or that the offer expired. Um, but it was my understanding it wasn't turned down. It was that they wanted more collaboration and conversation surrounding it. So perhaps I'm wrong in that. If someone can clarify that for me, I just don't know. The other thing I just wanted to clarify is this is not replacing, um, a board member, or replacing, I mean, Dr. Wayack referenced current, um, Southern High Public Library Board leadership. This is not replacing any leadership on the library board. This is just Southernly High adding a board position. Um, the closest equivalent I can come up with, sorry, is that in the news, you hear a lot of folks debating, wow, we should have, we should extend the Supreme Court of the United States, or no, we should not extend the Supreme Court. In this case, we're kind of deciding to extend the base of the court, in essence. So Upper Salken, it was my understanding from that meeting, added, uh, and another individual with voting rights, uh, for their representation. So they, they have two that they added at the last meeting. And we, Southernly High would no longer just have one voting member. We would have two voting members on the Public Library Board. Am I understanding that correctly? So whomever we add, it would be in addition. It wouldn't be changing leadership. It would be expanding the court, as it were. I think, I think my understanding is correct. I'm seeing nods. Yes. Okay. Just to let the public know that as well. Thanks.
I'd like to ask the two, uh, individuals, uh, question, and that is, uh, regarding board representation of this board as a representative of the library board. And, um, you know, we have a current representative now. We'll have another one. Uh, we've had, in my estimation, minimal, uh, feedback as to what the goings-on has been over the past year and a half. Uh, we invited the other board member here for additional clarifications. We had the board here, but, uh, I'm wondering how will either one of you communicate what's happening at the library board level and the plans and, um, understanding the desires of this board, and, uh, following through with the majority of, um, decision-making that may happen at this board to suggest, uh, how, how that individual should, should vote the will of the school district. Um, we've had a lot of significant changes at the, at the library board over the past year and a half, and a lot of things have changed. Um, there's been, um, a lot of strife, and there are also, uh, financial considerations that have to be made with regard to the budget, and what are the best scenarios to the benefit of the library itself and its, um, funders, one being Southernly High School District. So I'm wondering how you're planning on handling that as a task, being a board representative of Southernly High School District Board?
Mr. Mon, I appreciate that question. So I, I think, um, I agree with you. I think, I believe our representative had only spoken to the board once, um, in these 18 months or so. Um, and we've, we've had, certainly have discussed the library on a number of occasions. Um, I'd be happy to put that as an agenda item or ask, uh, our administration to have an agenda item, just to at least give feedback on the, the goings-on, follow-up from, from each meeting. Happy to discuss that, and certainly I think it deserves to be discussed in public.
Uh, I don't, uh, the library secretary has sent us the agenda and the minutes following all of their meetings to try to keep us updated on what they're doing. And our current representative has spoken when asked to speak and has been here to answer questions at any time thereafter anybody has had questions. She's been here, able and willing. Um, but I don't disagree with Mr. Wayack. Put, put a line item on the agenda if you want more, more updates and you want somebody from the library to come and give regular updates. Put an agenda item on that says, or at the end, when you have the committee updates, make the library one, and one of the two people that is serving our community will come to every meeting and will be here to give an updated report whenever, whenever you want. And as far as voting with the will of the board, as a representative of the school district, you are a representative of the school board, so that kind of goes along with the job.
Is, is important, um, because I think that's how I would see the representative of, of our board, is that, um, and I do think, um, I'm unaware of any time during the time I've been on this board that someone has asked, sort of sought feedback from us in regards to, now, it hasn't been too controversial over the years that I recall, so I'm, I'm not sure if people needed feedback to, to figure things out. But like on this LST issue, there's no doubt that that's, that's been a big one. I, I think it would have been helpful, and I certainly would expect the current person to be nominated, uh, would seek the feedback of the board, and for the most part, would do what the board's asking it to do, and not, in other words, see themselves as, I've been nominated and now I'm a completely independent party apart from the school district. They got me on there, but I can do what I think is best, um, because they nominated me, which I suspect they could, if that's the way they looked at their position. But I do think, uh, it, the ones from the township and the ones from the board, I think, should generally, uh, you know, seek out feedback from those two bodies, and for the most part, vote in accordance with the desires of those bodies, unless they had some kind of, you know, conscious, you know, conflict of conscience or something about it. But I mean, short of being asked to do something that you thought was just completely wrong or illegal, uh, I think you should generally do that. And I don't think that's been the case in the past. In fairness, I don't think we've communicated that as a requirement in the case in the past, but I also know we haven't had these kinds of issues come up out of the library, at least during my time, that I, you know, other than funding issues, you always have some funding issues, but certainly this, you know, taking on a whole new township, uh, and, and the funding involved in that is no small thing. And I think, uh, you should be voting in accordance with the bodies that are nominating you. And, um, you know, I would want to hear from, from both these individuals, that they're comfortable, even if they disagree with what the majority thinks is the best, that they're going to go with what the majority thinks is the best, because that's, that's what the board's desire is. I think that would be important. And if you don't want to do that, you should at least make that known, uh, and then, you know, I think, uh, in fairness. So, and then now be quiet, I think that's, but I think that's a very good point, Mr. Mon.
In, in fairness, I think our current representative is here, and, um, we could ask our representative how that individual voted, but I believe at the time of the public board meeting, that our representative was supportive of accepting what was on the table. I, I would.
I think I was trying to be careful. I'm not dispiring. I'm not, I'm not attacking anybody. I'm talking about going into the future.
Yeah.
When we now may people they have.
Okay, let's, let's clear this up.
And I just was unaware that anybody came here and asked us, what is our, in other words, I never saw communication from our own, uh, representative asking what our position was on that issue. Maybe I missed that, but that, that, and I said, that's bad on us, not necessarily bad on that person. We haven't, we haven't provided that guidance. I'm not
Sure.
attacking Mrs. Parsons anymore.
I agree with that. I, my, my clarification here is just that in times when there are big decisions to be made within an organization and somebody's a representative of somebody else, I think there's a need to have better communication. So I would like to see an improvement in that. So I was asking the two candidates what their take was on that. So, uh, these are pretty unprecedented times in the, in the, the life of a, um, public libraries board. And that's where, you know, I think, you know, we can certainly take some corrective actions here to ensure that we're getting better updates and getting feedback to the representative and vice versa.
A question for the two potential nominees. A few meetings ago, a few months ago, we had a representative here on behalf of Lower Salken that spoke to providing space for programming, and in particular for youth programming and some of the other activities that are very well-attended and have been well-attended for years by the community. Um, by accepting the offer from Lower Salken, it was, at least, the intent seemed to be that that space, which is something that the library could benefit from, and expand and offer programs to more people, um, was on the table. And I think that may have been a miss if this goes away. Um, I also would like to hear as part of the response, do you believe that a regional library for this area, which is essentially what it would become, would be of a benefit to the residents within Lower Salken, the Borough, Lower Milford, and Upper Salken, um, or not? And with that, with that partnership, would the library be able to do more, and in particular, do more without changing anything to the building over at the park here? So would it be a benefit for programming to partner with Lower Salken? And would it help in terms of offering a regional library resource to serve the residents better than what they might be served today?
First, I'd be happy to.
Okay, I may, I may need you to repeat some of that. I'm not sure. So as far as you're saying that Lower Salken offered more space? That is what he said. I, I, that's not.
Yeah, during the course of the presentation by the attorney on behalf of Lower Salken, they made it very clear that they have space available that's not being used currently that could be used for programming.
At Lower Salken?
At Lower Salken.
Okay. All right. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I.
Which is two miles down the road.
No, I, I just.
The space that he was talking about.
Wasn't sure I understood. I thought that you were going down another road with that. Um, as long as our community, our, because our community at this point comes first, like the, up, Lower, our Upper Salken Township, our school district does come first. If it can be shown that our residents will not suffer for taking on the extra, like, for, for the kids' programs, they're, they're very competitive to get into. If all of a sudden, our children, our, our students, our kind, upcoming kindergartners, our upcoming third graders can't get into these programs, which have really helped kids get ready for school, um, our kids can't get in them because Lower Salken Township residents are getting into the, in them, then we need to look at doing something about that. Like, that can't, that can't happen. It has to be fair, and it has to not be at the detriment of our students, in my opinion. Um, what was the second part? What was the second part again? I saw Chris writing it down, I wasn't writing it down.
I think, just in general, do you feel that a partnership with Lower Salkin would be of benefit or not?
I think that it is going to depend on getting in there and getting your hands dirty and finding out what comes with it. I'm not saying that it's not a good idea. I think that if you're going to merge to have one big library and you have to serve everybody equally, if there is no other way to make it better for the residents of Lower Salkin, because the residents of Lower Salkin don't want to come here. They don't, they do not want to come here. I'm not against it, but I'm not totally convinced until I see that everybody will still be treated equally, everybody will be treated fairly, and that our students won't have any ill impacts from doing that. Like I said, I'm open-minded to it, but I think it's hard to take a stance when you don't have all the facts in front of you, you're not sitting there at the table with them yet, so you don't know what the repercussions of some of those actions could be. It's hard to take a stance when you don't know those things. And then if you do take a stance and you find out later that you were wrong, well then the board's going to come back at you and say, well, you said this, but you didn't have all the information in front of you, so you didn't know. So, yeah, I'm very open-minded to it, but I kind of want to wait until I know what's going on.
So I, I mean, I agree, absolutely agree with that statement. I think, you know, we're partially working with not all the, we're not working with all the information. So as far as how the current building is being utilized, you know, are there open spaces? I do, I do understand, and actually, part of what I would fight for in particular would be that pre-K education. I know that's very competitive and it's very, I know there's waiting, wait lists and everything. I just don't know if this, if all the times are being utilized, all the spaces being utilized. I want to thank you for actually bringing up so that the community understands that there was an offer for space from Lower Salkin. So that's, I think, a big plus in this discussion, would be that there is more space available, especially for those programs, which I think are probably one of the most important things from our standpoint in the school district. I think just having these discussions, I've never heard so much about regional libraries or local libraries since these past two years. So I think that's a good thing. So I think as a benefit from a regional library, I think, you know, with, you know, a focus on ensuring that, you know, we're delivering for the community, that the library is delivering for the community, that the townships are delivering for the community, I think that's a net positive, will likely be a positive for both Upper Salkin and for Lower Salkin. There's going to be more funding available. So I think that while, yes, we are potentially expanding the community that's served, the fact that there's more funding, I think if we can increase some efficiencies with that funding, we can likely offer more services. So I think it's likely to be a net positive for the community.
Just to clarify, Chris, when you say there's, when you say there's going to be more funding, is that more funding coming by having an agreement with Lower Salkin, or is there other places where that's coming from?
No, so my understanding, just thinking about it from our library, so there's an offer on the table of over a million dollars over 10 years, so that's what I was specifically talking about. And the fact that there's more space available as well for programming, which I think is, you know, is a potential great thing to offer expanding services.
Could I ask one quick follow-up question to that? A good point Mr. Lisette made, but to both potential nominees. Part of the presentation we heard months ago, weeks ago, I can't remember, is that extra space availability, part of the crux of the matter is that if you want to utilize or accept funds or from, and take on Lower Salkin, there was discussion of a lot of what folks would potentially like to do with this deal would violate the governing board of Pennsylvania libraries. It starts with an O, and I always get the acronym wrong, but it's the Office of Something for Libraries. So there was a debate of whether or not that was an entity that this regional library system would then abide by or not. And so, essentially, if those extra spaces were to be taken advantage of from an Upper Salkin, you know, spatial utilization standpoint, that would be in violation of some of the standards of that governing board for the state. Also, if we took on that large of a population, if our public library took on that large of a population, it would be in violation of things like square footage of the home library and staffing of the home library, and actually, the amount of money, the money that's been offered over the course of 10 years would not be enough to fund those things required by the governing board. So my question to the two potential nominees is, would you, realizing that you don't have that information now, but would you weigh and decide to cut yourself off from that Commonwealth Pennsylvania governing board in favor of establishing a regional library that, you know, went against those rules and against those funding standards? Or would you prioritize abiding by the Commonwealth rules and regulations? Which would you decide to do? Because that ultimately, I think, is the choice before the library board, whether if they choose to accept those spaces and that money and not expand would be violating the Commonwealth law versus abiding by it and staying a part of that access library system and across the state.
Real quick, if I could ask, Ms. Ryan, we have a gentleman here from the township, township manager, who might have some information about if that was a violation or not, because I don't recall if it was. It seemed to me that there was a lot of questions around what this board actually oversees.
There's also library board members here that know a lot about it, too.
I understand.
Okay, folks, we're gonna, I think we've covered a lot of topics here.
Should we answer Emily's last question?
Let me finish. And I think that we're making some suppositions without having enough information. So what we're going to do is, let's move forward with the first motion here to consider the appointment of a second representative of Southernly High Public Library Board for a partial term expiring December 31, 2023. The appointment is being made pursuant to Article II of the library's bylaws. Let's get that done first. Can I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions regarding that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion's approved. With that, I will call, I believe we have two nominations, on Mr. Dr. Wayack. Ms. Gangware. Any other nominations? Okay, we're going to close the nominations and vote, and we'll do that by roll call.
I'm sorry, what are we roll calling right now?
We're recall, we're roll calling to vote for the representative.
Are we, to close the nominations? Are we voting to close the nominations?
Sure, I'm voting, okay, let's vote to close the nominations.
Okay, that's what we're doing?
Yeah, go ahead. Motion to close nominations?
Second.
Second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion, anyone opposed? Motion, the nominations are closed. Okay, let's vote. We'll do that by roll call. Is there something else?
I would do a motion, and let's just do it by alphabetical order. So do a motion to approve Kyle as the representative, and do a vote, and then depending upon, we will go to the second, or we will be done.
Okay. That's not how it was suggested. I will go with your suggestion, Ms. Solicitor, you are. Okay, so.
I was just going to call out maybe a straw poll.
A roll call was actually suggested, but that's okay.
We can do a roll call, but first, let's do a motion to appoint somebody.
Okay, a motion to point Ms. Gangware.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Then we do a roll call.
Roll call.
Jeffrey Gaiman?
No.
Kyle Gangware?
Aye.
Emily Gaiman?
Yes.
Nicole King?
No.
William Lisette?
No.
Stephen Maugh?
Nay.
Mary Jo Ryanars?
No.
Priya Serene?
Yes.
Christopher Wayack?
No.
Motion did not carry. It's going to be a second motion.
Okay, we have a second motion to appoint Dr. Wayack. Do we have a second? I can second that? Okay. So, do we roll call this?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Jeffrey Gaiman?
Yes.
Kyle Gangware?
Yeah.
Sorry? No. Emily Gaiman?
No.
Nicole King? Yes. Bill Lisette?
Yes.
Stephen Maugh?
Yes.
Mary Jo Ryanars?
Yes.
Priya Serene?
No.
Christopher Wayack?
Yes.
She carries.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wayack.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Gangware, for stepping up. So we have, I guess we'll move on to six and seven. We have a number of agreements and proposals to approve, and I'm going to take all of those together. That's numbers six and seven with one.
The online version is different from the printed one. So under five, there's multiple things, under six, there's nothing.
Under five, there's multiple things.
It's.
There's nothing under.
Am I looking at the wrong watch? I'm looking at January, that's why.
Okay, sigh of relief, Dr. Stevens.
I'm living in the past, because it was long.
Oh my God.
I'm living in the past.
Okay, with one caveat, which I believe is contained in the physical, the therapy services agreement, we will only be approving that, we have an option to approve that for three years, and we will only be approving that through 2024. So school year, current school year, summer, 23, 24. Okay? Motion? Okay, do we have any comments or questions on those agreements? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those agreements and contracts are approved. Mr. Pepe.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm trying to talk a little bit closer to the microphone. We have a number of items, so I'm going to just start at the top with the bills list. Obviously, bills list summary and details before you. This month, we're looking at about 1.3 million. Some of the standouts in there are the typical transportation, Norman's 115,000, Brandywine 232,000, and also our educational partnerships with LCTI in at 113, and CLIU in at 213. A lot of that is special education. Those four alone command about 48% of the total bills list, or 673,000. Ed Mentons in there, that's part of our online learning, 65,000. Integra, 36,000. You may be looking at that saying, what is that? That's technology, E-Rate, network infrastructure. Nazareth Music Center, 12,000, that covers instruments from tuba, saxophone, cello, string, and something else that's in there that I couldn't even pronounce. US, let's see, Upper Salkin Township, 43,000, that's our SROs at the middle school and the high school. East Park is also New Scope Math and Language Arts, 27,000. That's pretty much what's going on with the bills list, unless there's any other questions. And then there's also the other part of the bills list, which is devoted to EI associates, construction for the HVAC project, and a large payment to Athletic Fields of America for the stadium project. Okay, moving on. Treasuries report, pretty self-explanatory. Investment report continues to be doing well. We're up to 4.75 at our local Q and B. And also, you'll see that we did, in fact, bring back the first of the money that was put out through PSD-LAF, and that came back at 4% back at a time when most people were earning under 1%. Sweet Stevens agreement, that's to help us continue to finish up with some of the ongoing issues related to tax appeals and/or assessments.
I would like to, you know, is it possible to move this at this point over to, I mean, my understanding of why we continued to have Sweet and Stevens was that there was some litigation that was still ongoing. So I just want to make sure I understand that I would prefer that only litigation that was, that they were engaged with now, two years ago or so, is the only ones they're handling, they're not handling tax stuff across.
No, it's only that.
No. And my question was, how long would that continue? Do you have an anticipated timeframe for that?
No, not really. I would assume a lot of it's going to happen in this year. Mike, did you want to add anything?
Absolutely, we only have ongoing cases where we think there's some efficiency to allow them continue, and I think the major, there's one major case.
Right, we had four, we're down to about one or two.
We're down to one or two. And so, once those have concluded, that will be it. And any new business, we've always, as of late, have been sending it over to Kingspry.
Absolutely.
And we've, how's that, how's our experience with Kingspry been?
Fine. We've, yeah, we've been sending it over to Jonathan Herta.
No, I mean, that's been my experience, and I would like to, I feel more comfortable since they're handling the vast majority of our stuff at this point, to try to, but I understand that, I just want to make sure that whatever they were doing was only because that's.
Continuation.
A continuation, and anything arising since has been going over to Kingspry or Kingspry's been moving it to somebody else on our behalf. Thank you.
And Madam President, the last item I have on there, I believe, is the audit services. As the board is aware, our auditor is retiring and closing up his firm. As a result, we went out through an RFP for professional services, looked at three auditing firms that are all doing work in the Lehigh Valley area, and at this point are prepared to recommend Buckno, Lisicki and Company, and we feel that we are going to be the best served with the proposal that they're putting forward.
So with the exception of appointing a treasurer, which is 8G, can I have a motion to approve everything else contained in Section 8, Business and Finance? Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Pepe?
I have a couple of questions. I see the adoption of the proposed final budget here. Does that final budget include the additional special education teacher at the elementary level?
Yes, it does.
Does it also include the addition of an elementary teacher? The, because I know we talked about that there was a very good chance that that was going to be necessary.
If we exceed the 26, we will fund the teacher from the budget, yes. But we have not made that final decision as we're looking at numbers.
Okay.
Depending upon how they.
Does that budget include removing the two tech staffers from the middle and high school?
Yes.
Okay, then I have a couple other questions. Who is going to oversee the library at the high school without the tech guys there? It's my understanding that one of them is the, pretty much the sole reason that the high schoolers are able to access the library now. Who's going to oversee that if he's moved to a classroom?
And I'm not prepared to talk about individual staff assignments or any, very happy to address any questions, but I think this forum may not be the best. We have significant plans as to how to, you know, make sure we're in good shape with that reassignment, but who is going where and who is covering what? I prefer to avoid.
Well, my issue with that is that I feel like we are creating a problem before having a solution. Well, my issue with that is that I feel like we are creating a problem before having a solution to it. It appears that we are removing these guys, we got a list from somebody in the district a couple weeks ago that outlined, had to be at least two pages long, of duties that these guys have done, including coaching the What's So Cool About Manufacturing students, manning the library, which is the only reason our high schoolers are accessing the library. The TV studio is being run by these guys. And if they're not there, who's going to do those things? And have, has anybody even been asked to do those things yet? And I feel like we shouldn't be removing those positions as technology coaches, given all that they do for students, the direct instruction that they're offering students, the amount of support and instruction that they're giving to staff members, without having other volunteers in place or other employees in place to do those things. Because it's going to be at the loss of programs, it's going to be at the loss of education, frankly, to our students, to not have a solution to what we are, to the problem that we are about to create by eliminating those positions.
And, Ms. Gangware, I will reiterate the invitation that I sent to the board before. And I understand that you're working off a list of suggested impacts of this sent to you by the union. And I have said to the board, and I'll say again, that I very much wish to avoid talking about any specific role or duty that an individual employee has or doesn't have, or performs or doesn't perform in this district. And I will extend to you again the invitation that I extended before prior to this meeting in writing, for you to call me at any time, and we could take that list and go over it item by item, and we could talk very specifically about what is or is not being done, and roles and responsibilities, and how we envision making things better, perhaps even. But again, to take a list provided by a third party and to accept that as, well, this is what's going to happen, without providing the opportunity to actually say what our view is, and then to raise it in a forum, which would really require us to talk specifically about what we think a person is or isn't doing, I think may not be the best approach to getting the best information possible.
I'm not asking for any of that, though.
If we are insufficient in talking about our plans, then at a future meeting, we could talk about it. But the, what, who is doing what, and what is being done, perhaps as compared to what is suggested is being done on that list, maybe two different things. And again, not constructive, in my view, to be talking about in public.
Okay, but we're not, we're sitting here expected to vote on this tonight, and there are questions out there, and there are things that are going to go away. And there are countless things that these guys are doing for our staff and our students that will no longer be. I'm not asking you to tell me what they're doing, I'm not asking you to tell me where they're going, I'm not asking you to tell me who is going to be taking over those jobs. I am kind of asking that, I'm just asking, where is, the solution does not appear to be in place to the problem that we are about to create. And I'm saying that I don't think that we should be eliminating those positions until a solution is put into place. And if you want to revisit this next year, after we've, we've put solutions into place so that these programs don't go away, so that our studio equipment isn't sitting gathering dust in a room somewhere, then so be it. But I don't want to see all of this stuff go away because we don't, we put the cart before the horse. We eliminated the position before having a solution in place to carry on the library, or whatever else have you.
Can I, along those same lines, I'm sorry. So, I think part of the problem I'm having with this is I share those concerns as well. And I understand that we can't talk about specifics when it comes to personnel. However, I think there's a dichotomy, there's a big separation between, you know, how it was presented to us with respect to, you know, tech coaches maybe not having as much direct student interaction, as opposed to another list that we received in which there was a lot of interaction and that teachers. So, I guess one question I would have, rather than relying, for example, on one list, is have other teachers at this, because this would, I guess, impact more the secondary levels, correct? It's middle school and high school? Just so I understand, like, that's where these positions are held.
And the intermediate school.
And the intermediate school. So, I mean, we're faculty members that, you know, engage with these coaches and utilize their services? Because, you know, sometimes even if it's not viewed by some people as being a direct interaction with students, they might be relying on them in order to provide that direct interaction to students. So, you know, that's one concern I have. And I'm, so, I guess, while you can't go into specifics, I understand that, do you have a plan in place with respect to how those, you know, clearly they're doing something, you know, how those, how those are going to be carried out? And, and just really quick, my concern is, I'm really happy that we're looking at a lot of the primary education goals, and I know that's, it's part of our comprehensive plan, and I think we're doing a good job of that, and I appreciate everything the team is doing. But I feel like, you know, last year I was, we were in a similar position in that it was secondary positions that we were looking at that are, you know, kind of not going to be continued any further, for whatever reason. You know, I understand that on an annual basis, when you do the budget, you should look at redundancies and be fiscally responsible. I'm happy it's a balanced budget. But I just feel like, while it's important to build up our primary levels, I'm worried, you know, that a lot of things at the secondary level perhaps are the ones that go. And we've talked a little bit about, like, the high school library and how, you know, I feel like you could probably do a lot with that to help students be more successful, especially with, like, all the dual enrollment, all the CLAP exams coming, which is great. I feel like you could probably utilize that resource to help maximize those that you're providing already, which is great. And I know, based on those, those two items themselves are obviously very good for the secondary, you know, students as well. So, it's not like you're forgetting them. I just, I think I would feel better about voting for it if I knew that there was going to be-
Sure. And again, if this is where the board, I'm going to talk about our view of these positions and assist board members in voting, fine, all right. If we look at K through 12, we want to get the most value for the dollars we invest, right? And currently, roughly, two senior teachers is about a quarter million dollars. And again, our greatest value comes from our people, there's no question about it, right? With respect to teachers, there are teachers who've benefited from this very much. But from a systemic point of view, the impact, in my view, is extremely limited. I would say that because there's no tech support in K through three with respect to instructional coaches, zero. The two individuals, and again, I regret, this is where I'm being asked, so I'm going to respond. The, the two instructional coaches are tasked with grades nine through 12, and then also with the intermediate school and the middle school, right? The intermediate school has received drastically less support than the middle school, which is actually smaller. And when you look at how resources are done from a systemic point of view, if we look at outcomes, yes, they're doing great work, right? We're proud of them as educators. They come in and they do their thing every day. But when, when we take a step back and look to see, how are those resources being allocated? How might they be reallocated? And how might we systemically approach, for example, supporting teachers in developing expertise with technology? It may not be, well, if I meet you after school, I'll help you with this particular project on a one-on-one basis, right? There may be ways to say, look, with a quarter million dollars, we could bring people in to train trainers and talk about how we can do this K through- So- And my hope was that-
I'm just asking whether, that that's, so the train the trainers, but, I mean, I've certainly experienced that in my own line of work. So, is that, I think that's kind of what I'm asking for. Is that the kind of plan you have?
And my hope was-
So that this, this resource is not lost, right? Like-
And my hope was that we would not have assumed that what we received from the union, sent in good faith, from great people, was automatically how this whole thing worked. And if there were concerns about, hey, what about this, what about that? I would sit, invite people to come in and look at it, because, again, I don't want to, in my words, reflect poorly, and it inevitably will sound that way, on the two individuals who are doing this. And so, again, I think that there'll be work to do, there'll be things to overcome, but I'm confident that we can, we can do, you know, good work with this. And when we look at the two individuals and a quarter million dollars and how we reallocate, I think a case can be made that reallocation is a good idea. But I also note, all right, I don't get a commission for cutting staff here, you all know that, right? And so, you know, when I look at this, I know when I suggest, hey, we'll reduce here, we'll reduce here, people aren't going to like that. And it's, you know, and so, I say, as we look at this, I think this is something that can be accomplished flawlessly, without the slightest impact forever and ever, as soon as we get to the school, no. Because there are two good people doing good work. And there may be a growing pain here or there, but I'm confident in time, as we reallocate resources and reflect on how we do this, we can do it every bit as well or better. And that will, and I will not promise there won't be hiccup along the way, but I will promise to be responsive to it. And we do try to make these decisions in the context of scarce resources.
But my, my point to that, a lot of that was that there are some things, like, I'm just using the library as an example because it's the biggest one. Like, that's going to be a problem. There's not going to be anybody there to man it. There's not going to be anybody there to run the TV studio. There's not going to be anybody there to coach What's So Cool About Manufacturing. Those are problems, and those are problems that we, in my opinion, maybe it's just me, we should have solutions to before removing the people that are currently doing them.
For the media, and again, if you had called, I could have looked this up and answered the question, but for example, it's my understanding that the media person is an extra pay, extra duty point of, position. And if the current person on the job, again, I'm not meaning to reference him, but I will, would like to continue in that goal, in that project, in that, with that position, we'd love to have him. And if that person, for whatever reason, decides they would not want to do that anymore, we would find someone else who might want to take that job. Just as if there was a coach who didn't want to coach anymore, we would perhaps find a coach to do it.
But that's my whole point, is we don't have anybody there. We don't, we haven't asked anybody, we haven't put out feelers, we, you're saying that, well, we can just find somebody else to do it.
But you're assuming we haven't done this and we haven't done that. The positions have not been eliminated yet, okay? And so, if this person, any person in our district, were to decide they were going to leave tomorrow, be it a coach or a teacher or, we would then say, let's go find somebody. If the football coach or the baseball coach or the debate moderator or the moderator of any activity were to say, a week before the start of school, well, I'm leaving, then we would work to resolve that problem.
My biggest concern is, wait, hang on, hang on, I have one more point to make, and I'm going to make it. I'm going to make my last point-
Okay.
And then I'm done, and you can move on.
We need to let other people speak.
So, if, okay. My biggest fear is that a year from now, we are going to be sitting in these, well, I won't be, thankfully, sitting in these seats, voting on selling the TV equipment because it's gathering dust and not being used anymore because we don't have anybody to teach it. And then we'll be applauding the sale of the TV equipment. That's what I don't want to see happen.
Thank you. Mr. Demig, I believe you wanted to make a comment?
I just have a few questions if I could, which are, well, somewhat related, don't stem from anything from the union questions, or I don't believe field or personnel issues. What is the amount of money budgeted in this budget for the library in the senior high school? What is the amount of-
What is the amount of budgeting of dollars for the senior high school library in this budget?
If you give me a moment, I'll just fill that up.
While Mr. Pepe is looking for that, does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I also had a question to follow that up, which is, what is the amount of dollars allocated to any personnel to administer or work in the library in this budget? And then my comment to that, while we wait for the answer, is I don't attribute that failing to this, to this administration in any way. That is an existing problem that has existed well before any of the current administrators were here. So, while my comments are meant to be critical, they're really critical of this board, previous boards and previous administrations. I consider this a inherited problem. And while, over the years, I have tangentially mentioned it, I now feel with the six months that I have left on the board that I am going to do my utmost to ensure that there is a plan for the library in the senior high school of this building. I believe it is completely unacceptable for a district like ours to have a library like ours. And again, that's no disrespect to anyone who works in the library, and frankly, has no disrespect to this administration. That is a failing of previous boards and previous administrations, myself included, who voted to eliminate the librarian, I did. But I did it with the understanding that that was going to be a replacement in short order. And I believe, probably, eight years on, I don't recall when that vote was taken, that has never occurred. And it's crazy, at a minimum, because it's our senior high school library. And it is, I think, a disgrace to go in there. And again, this has nothing to do with this administration, I want to make that clear, they inherited it. And it really has nothing to do with the current principal or anybody else, they inherited it. But we have taken no action on it. And perhaps this board feels that way. I'm going to make it my mission over the next six months to find out how the board feels about it, and whether there's five people that want to join me in suggesting for next year's budget, not this year, not the one we're voting on. But I want to see, I would hope that the board, at a minimum, would join me in getting a plan to address this library. Even if that plan, and the majority of this board thinks, is to do, you know, declare it to the community and say, we don't really think we need it, or we think it's a waste of time, or whatever it is. Or we think we need a different design for that, or a different purpose for it. But I think it's unacceptable, and I would hope the, all nine of us think it's unacceptable in its current form. And I believe it's unacceptable also because I'm unaware of any plan to change it. So, that's my concern. And am I, are the, did the funds allocated there back up my concern? We'll find out. Am I about to be made a fool of? Which wouldn't be the first time.
So, Mr. Demig, the library supplies are in line with previous years. We have $9,000 budgeted. The last actual spent was $9,518, and that was 21, 22. Each year, it's been 9,000 cents. I'm sorry?
Are there specific line items with respect to how that money was spent?
No, I don't have that. I just have the account.
It's just a bundle.
And then also, in partnership, the media supplies are also at $9,000, and the actual spent in 21, 22 is 9,477. So, there hasn't been any change in that. There is no dollars allocated here as far as salaries, like you had asked about.
Okay, so, that's very helpful, and I appreciate it. You know, I think that funding seems fair if it's going to, directly to, you know, basically, the library. I think it's a little unclear. But two, I am right, I think, on the last part, which is-
It hasn't changed.
Well, there's no money at all allocated to anybody running the place. So, that, to me, is a problem, and it needs to be addressed.
Well, was the money allocated to the tech coaching position? Okay, so there's no one covering it, they're cross-covering.
You know, if we're saying the tech coach is now doing the library, that's not the role of the tech coach.
No, it's not. But I'm just curious if that, is that- No, it's not. But I'm just curious, is that, is that part of the reason why?
Yeah, I want to be clear. I'm not trying to bring that up at all. I'm talking only about.
Well, I just am wondering if that's why it got sunsetted because somebody just cross covered it and then it just got left out.
And I would say that very thing is why this would be, why it would draw our attention. Because it, it would be like, why do we have a person? What's the specific thing? And, and if, if the tech coach is doing maintenance on computers, that's very helpful, but that's not what the tech coach should be doing. That's what the tech department should be doing. And if the, if the tech coaches help distributing library books, well, that's a helpful positive thing, but it's not what that person should be doing. And if they're not doing what they should be doing, well, then we should not have them. I mean, that's just the, and finds, and if there are needs that, if, if we need a librarian, well, then there should be a librarian. If there is a, you know, if there needs to be a tech person, then we should have another technician. But we shouldn't have the tech coach who's supposed to help in instruction doing these other things.
I'd like to just suggest that you take some time, administration, just to dig into it a little bit and get better answers after the dust settles from this meeting. And also I suggested to the Southern Lehigh Public Library, and I'll suggest it here is that I think there needs to be some sort of a strategic plan for moving the library into the 21st century on top of it so that it is more applicable to today's research standards that the students will in fact be finding at the university level or elsewhere. So that's my take.
I mean, I, I would agree with that. I mean, I, I think one way potentially to approach it, just an idea that, and obviously it's not going to be applicable to the current budget, I know. But, um, you know, for the future, I would hope that we could incorporate it. There are elements of construction planning that obviously we couldn't afford, you know, fiscally responsibly so anyway. That I think we could potentially combine with some of this. I mean, part of the, the planning was more of a steam component, right? There were going to be labs or rooms. Potentially you don't have to build new space for that. You could just adjust the space within the library perhaps. Certainly science and technology could utilize that space, you know, the library as well. Potentially maybe we could do something for the arts. I'm going to say it again, because you're, I have, I have a similar mindset, Mr. Demig, in that, you know, with the six months I have, if I can do anything positive with respect to, um, more equity across the buildings and, and build our arts program to give it some more recognition. I mean, it's no one's fault. Everyone cares a lot about it. I know that up here. Um, it's just that they do really well with what they have, which is fantastic. And I think any support we can build in that way, and I know we're going to have that STEAM expo at the middle school, for example, next week, which is really cool. You know, so I, I just remembered that was the plan. In addition to a performing arts center, there were going to be new rooms that were going to be dedicated towards that. I, I could see utilizing, um, I don't know, combining the two. So it's a little bit more fiscally responsible. Uh, just throwing it out there for what it's worth.
And I would invite any board member who would like to know about our plans carefully considered about these two positions to schedule appointment, give me a call. We could do a presentation, but again, I'd like to avoid that in public. But we very much want to talk to you about all the planning and all the discussions and all the efforts that we have gone through, uh, in preparation for our recommendation to, uh, eliminate these positions. It has been substantial.
I think we've heard a lot of talk tonight about staffing positions as seems to be the focus. Mr. Demig with the library and Ms. Gangware with the tech positions. I think we ask, we are not in a position as board members to know the ins and the outs of where money is best spent in these classrooms in these buildings. Like we have department chairs and teachers and curriculum experts and, and business managers, the experts in our classrooms and our buildings and in central office to build a budget and let us know where those monies are best spent. I think what would help me as a board member, I, the balanced budget is essential and, and being fiscally responsible is essential. I think what would help me as a board member is because I am not the expert, to try to understand the decisions that are being made with regard to when we as a board are being asked to look at, you know, reducing or eliminating staffing positions. Now granted, through attrition and through retirement and through other means, not, you know, not any other. But I think it would be helpful for me to know within this same, um, budget with the same dollar amount, these same figures, different ways of slicing that pie, as it were. So what does it mean to this board to explain to the board if we were to retain those positions? Or if we were to have a library, uh, dedicated staff member, or if we were to have, you know, keep tech position, or whenever we're asked any staffing. If we could see what the decision-making process was or what other part of the budget, you know, what, what, what's, what was the decision? You're weighing this. When I go to the grocery store and I have so much money to spend, I know, well, I can buy the strawberries or I can buy something else. Knowing what those options are and what staff cuts mean or what the other option is within the same operating budget might be very helpful to me as a board member to understand how, um, how those decisions are balanced and made, just to help, just to help me understand. Absolutely. You folks are the experts and you made a decision to present us with this preliminary budget and hours and hours and hours of time and collaboration went into it. I think sometimes it's just hard maybe for me to understand, you know, what the, what the other choice would be to retain a position. Or if it's, if it's even possible within this budget. That would be my only.
We would welcome that conversation anytime. If you would, you know, care to have it, you or other members of the board, we'd come in and go over all of that information. We would welcome that, that conversation.
I think it would also help the public. I mean, you're saying a private, kind of a private conversation. I think it would help the bud, the public to hear a lot of these conversations to understand that as well. Cause it's their tax dollars after all. Um, I, that's part of my, I guess, as a part of this budgeting process, it would, it would be nice to see like when we're asking you to reduce staff, here's the other choice. Not just why it's so important, because I think you've, you've explained that. But I, I think if there's a way to have that, what these choices are before the board, because we don't have a, a budget committee and we don't have, you know, extra other committee meetings where that is done. I think part of, it would help the public to understand.
I mean, I don't want to reduce it to, to the simplest terms, but we would either eliminate the positions or we wouldn't. And it would be either save a quarter million or not. And, and then, you know, the impact of what that means back and forth, I mean, we could certainly discuss, but I, I would say that just as we were talking about a few things here and how we might redo this. Again, I, I don't know if that's a public presentation. We've have all kinds of public presentations on the budget and where we are and what it is. And if we want to talk about individual positions with individual people attached to it in the public setting as we're doing now, I'm uncomfortable.
Oh, yes. No, I would be as well. I guess you just.
It all comes back to two real people.
But yeah.
And, and I'm uncomfortable going so far as I am tonight.
Oh, yes. But you, you were able to, which was helpful quantify, you know, just of any staff position. You were able to quantify a quarter of a million dollars. All, I think all I would be asking for is a sense of where else could that quarter million come from? And why are you not proposing it come from those other regions? You know, that, that's all.
We've, we've, well, I'll tell you, if there was another region, if there was another place for a quarter million, it wouldn't be either or, it'd be both and. All right? So we would look for any efficiency in the budget we could possibly find. And we wouldn't say, well, we found one, we're not finding the other. We're going to push to find every efficiency just as if we find particular needs, we're going to come to the board and say, look, we need to expand in this as we have done. So our approach would never be, well, we found something here. Let's put this off. It would be, we found two things, not one. And this will ultimately allow us to run our place better, to reallocate our funds to where perhaps they would be better spent and ultimately to, you know, make the most of our scarce resources without going back and saying, let's raise taxes. So that's our, I mean, that's the concept right there.
And, and I appreciate that, um, the, the entire team effort, the district wide effort to identify those areas that could be considered least efficient. And that is the approach, building the budget from the bottom up. I completely understand and appreciate that. And, and there are so few efficiencies to find. I guess you're, what you're saying is this is, this is the one that was found.
Can I just add in one comment? And that is in addition to personnel, which has a direct impact on benefits, pension, there's a lot loaded up into that. But we also look at discretionary versus non-discretionary as we're starting to build the budget. And we're not building the budget up in central office on our own. We have input from all the building leaders coming up. And we go through and look at opportunity costs, because that's what we were talking about.
Yes, absolutely.
If this, then that. And a lot of that actually happened at the high school when we went through the detail, even to the supply accounts. The budget is not stagnant. As we get forward, as we move forward, it's a plan. So we ensure that we have at this point, $9,000 in the supply line for the library and that is dedicated for the library. If it turns out we need $10,000 this year in the library, then we're going to have to find $1,000 somewhere else within the budget to cover some unanticipated expense. At the same time, if we find that we're able to run the year on $8,000, then $1,000 will be available to either go into end of year total or it will go to another part of the budget, just as the superintendent said. And whether it's this district or any district, as changes occur, we need to be able to pivot. And if the numbers warrant an additional teacher, the superintendent will come down and tell me it's happening. And I can say, well, it's not in the budget and the superintendent is going to say, make it happen. So you have to remember, we also have a fund balance. And the fund balance, unreserved, undesignated is running at 6%. So that's also to cover those unanticipated things. Special education is one area of the budget that is very, very difficult to put your finger on.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there's a lot at play. There's a lot at stake. So when you start to consider this over that, or well, then I'm not going to support the budget because we may not have enough in this line item, that's really not a way to look at budgeting.
Yeah.
I think overall it's a very good budget that was put together with a lot of thought. When it comes to personnel, that's always going to reside ultimately with the superintendent in any district. The superintendent is the only person that can hire, fire, recommend, whatever. But I know there's a lot of thought involved in that. And just as Dr. Mann was saying, a lot of times we look at, how can we adjust and make up what's necessary to retain a high quality district? We did it in the business office. I eliminated a position I recommended eliminating when I came in. Here we are already one year further in and it absolutely worked great. And we're going to continue to run that way. Are we running lean? We're running efficient. Are people getting the job done? Absolutely. And that's just one example. But that's what you're talking about with opportunity cost and the same thing with facilities. That's why we have reserves. Okay? And as things come up, just like the discussion about our roof, we absolutely are looking at that. We have our architect coming out who's going to look at the roof and they have also specialists who are trained for that to determine whether or not beyond our scope of, well, it doesn't appear to have an issue. So all these things are in place and they're working.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry. I appreciate that explanation. So I mean, clearly it's a dynamic process. So in addition to the superintendent, you know, making those decisions throughout the year as the need arises, I would assume that, you know, since, you know, building budgets are kind of directed under the supervision of the building principal and then they move up to you. So I'm assuming that if there was a need in a particular building, then we would rely upon the principals to come to you and find the funds. And I'm assuming if the funds don't exist under that building, because I know there's general funds as well, right, as a reserve, then you would go, you would look elsewhere as a team, right? Because I just, just to kind of understand the process a little bit better.
And that's part of the reallocation when we're doing budgets. Because, you know, one of the things that I touched on this year in particular is not just doing budget to budget.
Right.
Doing budget to actuals. Because if your particular building is getting funded each year, but you're not spending the funds that you're receiving and one of the other buildings is coming up short, well, the first thing I'm going to do is sit there and say, I'm looking district wide. And in this particular juncture, it makes more sense to reallocate a portion of your budget into the other building. And moving forward, we make sure people are not under budgeted or over budgeted. We're trying to be as close to accurate as possible.
And I think people might be surprised that they'll get things when they come over and they ask for it in a thoughtful way. And, and I will also say, um, part of the reason that we're looking closely at the tech coaches right now is that given certifications, no one has to lose a job. All right. That the vacancies as they currently exist allow for this to occur with, whereas next year, maybe that's not the case. All right. But with certifications and the specifics of it, that now is a good time for this. And I will, I will say, there is an, at least one other position in the district that we might've been able to consider, but we would not have been able to do it without having somebody actually physically lose a job. And I wasn't interested in, in doing that. And again, that's a decision I made. We don't debate it back and forth. That's just, you know, what I came up with. Uh, but it is a matter of, you know, there's multiple factors that go into this. And, you know, someone could say, well, here's a, here's a position that you could do without. Maybe they would be right, but then we would also be doing without someone who was working and would lose a job, which we'd never want to have happen here. So that's like, again, part of it.
So I guess ultimately what I'm hearing you say tonight is that, you know, when board members consider we could have this, we could have this. Ultimately, if the board wants to retain those staff positions and have staff, um, levels remain where they are without moving those tech coaches or adding a library, uh, staff person. Ultimately, it's, comes down to an increase in taxes is what I'm, I'm hearing for this budget. Which it is a 0% tax increase. And I know that was at the request of the board and that's what you're striving for. But when you're comparing those apples to apples, ultimately, I mean, because when you're trying to build the budget from the bottom up, you can only build so far with what you have.
Well, and, and let me say this, the board has never said, don't raise taxes. Never has said that. And, and, and I don't go into the, the, the year saying, we're not, it's not going to raise taxes and work from there. We do say, how can we drive the best efficiencies? Where are our needs? And, and where can we change things up to save money? And, and so, and then we look at our revenues and the appreciation of the mill and all these factors that go in there. So, so I, I don't ever want to come to the board with a recommendation to raise taxes. I did last year. And, and we'll do it again if necessary, but before I do, I think, at least from my perspective, like I have to, you know, shake things out pretty hard before we come and start asking those questions about raising taxes, particularly when I think we can do pretty well with the people that, I shouldn't say pretty well. We can do great things with the way we have things structured. So again, it, I'm not on commission for cutting positions, right? It's just a matter of saying, I think we can do this. It's a big organization and we can adapt and yes, there'll be hiccups. And people will say, why didn't this happen? And I'll say, look, we'll fix it best we can. But if, I will tell you, medical benefits went up 11%. That was the increase in medical benefits. Now, the impact on our budget was much smaller because over the course of time, mostly outside of the instructional staff, we've been rolling things back. As Mr. Pepe pointed out in his own department, and that's true across the board. And so part of the reason that we're not being hit with 11% actual increase in medical costs is because we have fewer people here. And we're doing okay. And this is not talking about teachers, fewer administrative support. So again, that's just our approach that we take. We're very happy and the board can hire or not hire or ask for reductions, whatever they want. We're responsive to that. So we just kind of do it and throw it out for your consideration. We'd be happy to adjust in whatever way the board likes.
One or two comments and a question, two questions. Comment. Dr. Mann, you were hired to do a job that's be the CEO of this district. Work happens. So it's up to you to bring recommendations to us to get the most return for the investment that's being made. What is our annual budget forecast for the upcoming school year? Total dollar value? When I came onto this board, our budget was about 42 million dollars. I don't think our taxpayers want to keep seeing this growing and growing and growing without results. And the administration today, I can say unequivocally. And what they're delivering in terms of results for those dollars is better than what it was when I came onto the board. And they're looking for the opportunity to deliver the best value in the classroom. to deliver the best value in the classroom for the dollars invested. What I never heard throughout any of this, and we just confirmed, it's essentially a redeployment of staff to a place where they can deliver more value than they may be. With that, there might be some growing pains. There might be some ways of figuring things out. I have not heard that the library is going to be left unstaffed, unused. I can't imagine that that will take place. But I will join what I think I heard, what I've heard you say for years, Jeff, that I think reimagining the library and having, if it's a librarian or it's a student, whatever the 21st century librarian looks like, and have that as part of our available curriculum and support, I would fully support that. And I'd love to see that in the budget for the upcoming year before I leave November. Because I think it would be very valuable. And speaking for my own judgment, it's a resource that when you go off to college or you go off anywhere, being able to find research and look for the answers that can lead is something that they could have been better served by. You didn't get it through the government. So having that, I think, would be of great value in whatever it means to be an entrepreneur. At what I think would be a relatively reasonable cost for the investment. But I do think we need to focus and kind of wrap things up. Like, we're governance. You're managing the day-to-day along with your staff. And I can't imagine that you and your staff would make more pain for the day-to-day operations in decisions that we're making. It's got to be a winning solution that's delivering results or anybody becoming a recognized candidate. So I, I just, I trust in that. And that if there are hiccups, you're going to manage them along with the building staff, and everyone will get through it. That's all.
Are there any other new comments or questions? Okay, that. Let's vote. All in favor?
Do you want to take the budget separately from the rest of it?
I can do that. So let's take. 8C. Section of 8C and 8G. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, let's take the motion for the approved budget, final budget.
Motion. Motion.
Any other new comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Budget's approved. We need to elect a board treasurer. In accordance with Section 404 of the public code, we shall during the month of May elect a treasurer to serve for one year beginning the first day of July following such an election. Do I have any nominations? Go ahead. Good suggestion. Do I have any nominations? Currently, Dr. Wayack is serving as treasurer. Did you want to continue serving as treasurer?
I'd be happy to continue.
I would defer to Dr. Wayack if that's a matter of.
I'd be happy to continue.
No, thanks, Dr. Wayack. So we need to.
Yeah.
So all in favor of Dr. Wayack continuing as treasurer? Is anybody opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Wayack. Okay. Human Resources are recording.
So tonight, we have first readings of policies. There are 20 policies listed. There are some deletions or removals. And there are some new policies and some revised policies. I sent them out to everybody last week. Does anybody have any questions on the first reading of the policies listed under Human Resources? Do you want me to just keep going? And we'll do one vote? All right, second, second readings. So we had a discussion last month for the first reading of now the second reading policies. This is Section B I'm talking about, 10B. If you reviewed those policies, you'll see that our solicitor added some language, and I put that language in red. And then there is bold language for new additional language and crossouts. So any policies that had none of that information, I cleaned them all up and they're ready to go. Otherwise, all the new language is in there in bold and/or red. Does anybody have any questions about those policies? This is 10B. Hearing none?
Mr. Demick?
No, no, I don't.
That's exceptional.
I listened to this, I listened to the directions last time. And they told me to ease off, so.
No.
Am I, you know, I'm getting, getting towards the end here. So I'm easing off a little bit.
Oh.
I hear you. Anyway.
I'm not getting paid, Ben. You keep rolling.
Anyway, moving right along.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna just, we're gonna take the motions for the policies and vote on those first. Then we'll vote on the rest of the.
Very good.
The hires.
I'm joking.
HR, or HR actions. Okay, so can I have a, a motion? Okay. No more comments and questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to those policy? Okay, so the first reading and second readings are approved.
Next, we have the HR report. On the report, there are mostly the extracurricular activities and appointments for the 23, 24 school year. We'll continuing more of those as the information comes in. There's a lot of coaches in this one. There's also some summer custodial ESY and subs listed in the report. And the one thing I do want to bring up is there are some individuals with days without pay. Those are fitting within our normal parameters, and, and the board needs to take a look at those. Does anybody have any questions about the HR report?
Motion? Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, nay.
Those HR actions are approved. Committee reports, can we get a brief update on the, from the Facilities Committee?
So Facilities met stadium. And we did take a tour of the stadium to see where we were in construction. And we've also had an update recently, basically, of the timing of the different activities. The primary focus right now for construction is finishing the second basin, which they are nearing completion. The plant material probably has been moved by now. I haven't checked it, but it was in a staging area up in the stadium. They've started to take dirt off the field. In fact, a substantial amount of dirt has been removed because everything has been going well with the construction of the basins. And I guess the EPA and the other bodies that have been going through the approval process said, yes, you can continue and start to move that earth, which they have. The lights have begun to come down. And the materials are there. In fact, even part of the scoreboard has started to arrive and is there. If anybody wants to see the speaker or the basic stands and the top is there also. But essentially, within the coming weeks, the basin will be finished. The footers for the bleachers will be going in. The lights will be fully down. And they will begin the process of erecting the bleachers and moving to the field to start the sub-construction of everything that will go underneath it. And at this point, we are still on schedule for the initial completion to be in August and early to mid-August with the final completion, everything, you know, basically working through the punch list materials in the October timeframe. Lou, any, anything that you would update or change from what I just shared?
No, you got it.
Okay. We also talked about the IS brick repairs, replacement to begin taking place. There's a meeting for later this month. If I recall, it was the 31st, where there will be a kind of essentially planning meeting of what's going to be coming on site as far as materials, when the construction will take place. Just not when, but working out the details. Because of course, they won't start anything until classes have ended. And that is set to take place over the summer. Anything to update there around any specifics, Lou?
No.
Okay. The HVAC is moving forward. And those plans and the ordering of the materials and everything else is taking place according to what we've discussed. And trying to think, there wasn't anything else substantial other than we did talk about the roof. And as Lou had mentioned during the budget discussion and the questions there, there are plans for the architect and also an engineer and others to come in and reevaluate based upon the report that we got almost a year ago. Lou, if I'm off on this comment, correct me. But the individual who did that roof scan and made the inflammatory comment about that roof that was heard at the meeting also does roof replacements, correct? Okay. So may have been looking to drum up business in the conducting of that report to some degree. And may have used a term which was not necessarily correct in terms of how bad or not bad that roof material might be. Is that fair?
And I think just an observation and a statement around it. If people recall before we went to the short drought that before it's a short drought that we're having, we had a deluge of rain through April and into early March. And I think for the first time that I can recall at some time, the bucket brigade was not out with some of the rain coming into the school buildings at various buildings. And I think that's a credit to, one, the maintenance staff, but also what you and Michael have been doing around facilities, that that's not the case. And it was quite common in past years for that to be the case. So I, I do thank you for that. But I think it's important that while the facilities, some of them are aged more than others, you and Michael have done an exemplary job of overseeing and taking very actionable steps to evaluate what it is that we need to do, when we need to do it, and having actual professionals come out to give a third-party view. And I, I think I appreciate it because I feel informed more so than in the past. And I think the taxpayers should know that you're, again, being very wise with their dollars.
Mr. Pepe, I want to clarify. Michael Rohrbaum is the Michael that he's talking.
Yeah, not you.
I want to be clear.
You're Mike.
Give me credit where credit is due.
So thank you. So a little bit longer than you may have wanted, but that's the report on Facilities.
Could I give an IU report? Thanks. Representative on the CLIU board, I am happy to announce that the IU approved a new executive director at its last meeting. Dr. Gregory S. Coons will be taking over. Dr. Elaine Ive is retiring, and we wish her all the best. And we were very happy to welcome Dr. Gregory S. Coons to the IU. He will start in August for a four-year contract. And we just had a wonderful time getting to know him and welcoming him aboard. So I wanted to make that announcement. As well as at the last IU meeting, we were able to kind of walk into the inaugural usage of, they have a, I'm forgetting the technical term, but they have a new lab at the IU in the IU building for hands-on maker space as well as esports. And they had a few inaugural programs, and they're, they're having, teachers are welcome to come up and check some of the machinery out, as in checkout, as in the library service, and use them in their home districts. And there are 3D printers and other various robotics maker space type technology that was grant-funded and is currently in that lab in the IU space. And one of the best comments, esports is up and coming in teaching careers in coding and video gaming. And it's kind of a really great, the cutting edge that the IU is kind of dipping its foot in, that all districts can kind of partake in. But also, one of the best comments I heard was, I believe it was a student who anecdotally was being, the IU board was being told this anecdotally, a student from East Penn said, as for esports, I never thought I would be a hornet. But now I'm a hornet. As in, they never thought they would be able to partake or participate in a competitive event. But esports opened that window to that individual. And so it was just a great thing to hear that that resource is available through the IU to all students in all districts participating in Carbon in the High Counties. It was really neat and new perspective, I thought, to hear that student's perspective of, now I'm a hornet.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gaiman, on with regard to LCTI. Mr. Ma and I have been the representatives from this board. I will no longer be able to continue as the representative. I am giving the message out to all of you asking if one of you would step up and join Mr. Ma. It's due to my travel schedule. I have missed too many meetings. I don't like missing meetings. I agreed to do this. I made the commitment because nobody else wanted to. So I'll put it out there. And if you can get back to me. and if you can get back to me, speak up now if you're willing to join up. You do get bogeys and salads prior to the meeting. And meetings are very efficiently run and very concise and very professional.
You would want somebody that you know is definitely going to be here at the, at the end of the year, right?
I think at this point, I don't think that really matters. I think the exposure... No, seriously, seriously. I think the more board members who participate and have some exposure to LCTI is a good thing. I don't, I don't think it's critical that the person be continuing. Too bad I can't just make the assignment, right, like the teacher. Okay.
I had new business.
Go ahead.
Good. And I, I agree with everything that Mr. West said, so in regards to the budget and the library as well. And so I'm gonna strike while the iron's hot. I just got a feeling I might have numbers tonight. And, and again, earlier, my comments were not critical at all of the administration. And in fact, I found this administration to be so helpful and efficient and good at getting things done that I would like to make a motion to direct the administration to develop a strategic plan for the high school library presentation to this board no later than October 31st, 2023. And I think we can move on that tonight because I think it's a corollary to the broader budget discussion that we had.
Okay. I, I, I think we have a first, a second, a third. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody oppose?
I have one.
It's already on the list.
I, I have one quick new business item, too. I haven't seen anything on any of our social media pages about it, but our kids are going to the Freddy's on Thursday at seven o'clock on, I believe, the Service Electric Channel on TV. Our kids were nominated for, I believe, seven or eight Freddy's, including best overall picture. They get to perform live on stage. It's all going to be on TV. It's very exciting. I'd really like to see some hype somewhere about it. Good job, kids.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick thing here. I just want to acknowledge and thank the township and the library for coming tonight and appreciate their attendance. And then I also wanted to concur with the performance of the administration on our budgeting and our other efforts within the school district. I think they've been doing a great job and I would implore any school board member to take Dr. Mann up on his invitation to have conversations. I do that and I think they're very helpful and I think they're informative.
Okay. And with that, the last new piece of business is the announcement of a negotiation committee that will commence immediately. And that committee will include Dr. Wayack, Mrs. King, and myself. Do we have any other new business or other business? Visitor questions? Visitor comments?
Hold on a second, Max. It is working.
So you can come here and do more conversations.
This is just a little less awkward. Hello, Nicole Dolan again. First, oh, he's not here. Mr. Pepe, thank you for, for all of that information that you were able to add. Hearing those timeline things, I'm pretty sure that's the first time I heard it laid out like that. Super helpful. I really appreciate it. I hope I'll tell him that later after he gets back. I am not defensive of Mr. DiBuno. I don't have any connection to him. But I'm going to just point out that it seems strange to me in one breath to be, it, it was the administration at the facilities committee meetings that talked up Mr. DiBuno's expertise so much that made me take what he said so seriously. Mr. Pepe, you missed it, but I thanked you a whole lot. I can tell you later. But thank you for all that timeline information about the Liberty Bell roof stuff. So the, the only reason I had such strong a way of taking his information was because of how the administration said they had worked with him in the past and he was really great and knew all of his stuff. And when he said that so much of the high school and I think also middle school insulation was not damaged. And so if you, you know, whenever you did your repairs or if you decided to do a roof replacement, you would not have to replace all of your insulation, which saves the school district a lot of money and all of that stuff. As you said, his information was really helpful and you guys totally talked him up as like, great, I'm so glad he had this information. This is exactly why we do this. And, you know, this is all paraphrased, of course. And then in the next breath, say that whatever he said about the Liberty Bell roof is discredited because he also replaces roofs. Either he knows what he's talking about or he doesn't. And that's what I don't get. So thank you for your time. That's my feedback.
My name is Kat Boyer. I'm your upper store representative for the Southern High Public Library. We actually saw each other a couple weeks ago at the Southern High Speed Tournament. Nice to see you again. I just wanted to clarify some things from that letter from Upper Socken. As Ms. Gaiman pointed out, the Southern High Public Library did not, in fact, outright reject Lower Socken's offer. Our plan was, and is what we voted on ultimately, was to organize a meeting with all of our funders and all of our partners to try to find a way to navigate a way through Lower Socken's proposal. Lower Socken proposed a few dates that were unmeetable, such as they wanted full access PA by June 1st. That's a state-run program that we don't have any control over. We would have to get approval from the states, from the governor's office on libraries. There were a lot of little nuanced things in that proposal that Lower Socken sent to us that needed discussion, that needed full discussion with all of our funding partners, which is why we ultimately told our solicitor and he told Lower Socken's solicitor before the May 1st deadline what our plan was, which was to meet with all of you and discuss it. It was not to outright reject $1 million. Which, by the way, even with that $1 million, we were looking at a deficit, I think, of about $61,000 every year for Lower Socken's proclamation. And a lot of it hinged on following state guidelines, which in Pennsylvania, you don't follow library state guidelines. You don't receive Pennsylvania state library funding, which means that your residents would not have access to Pennsylvania, which not have the Angel Library program. We did the same vote as Lower Socken residents. So again, we did never voted to outright reject $1 million. That would be ridiculous, obviously. Our plan was to meet with all of you, have a discussion, and to try to find a way to navigate through all of the state laws. And also our agreement between the High Carbon Library Cooperative, we would have to get permission from 12 other libraries to fully accept Lower Socken into our service areas. There were a lot of small things that added up into a big need for discussion with all of you. Plus, we were underrepresented at the time. We didn't even have a lower Milford representative on our library board when we received Lower Socken's proposal. There was many things that prevented us from saying, yes, let's take $1 million. It wasn't just an outright rejection. And again, we did contact their solicitor before their May 1st deadline to let them know what our plan was and what our board voted for. I think Upper Socken just wrote that letter and approved it before they heard a minute from our meeting and also brought public comments that night as Emily was there to see. There were many, many public comments about what our library board should be doing. If anyone has any questions, our library board is always open to answer questions. We don't have any problems coming to you, meeting with you, having discussions, openly, privately, ask us questions. We work with librarians. That's my time. Thank you.